Okay, we're ready to go. This is the Mendon Select Board Meeting, December 19th, 2022. We're being recorded on PEG TV, and Sarah is recording us at the same time.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, again, I'll mention that Mendon Select Board Meeting, December 19th, 2022. President, both Val and myself, Justin Lindholm is here. So far. And first order of business is add or delete any items to the agenda. I have nothing to add or delete, so, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Just a second, though.
Let me, I'm gonna back up a minute. We are gonna tail the minutes until our next meeting. So a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of for B, the minutes of 12:12, 22. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Announcements. The Select Board is still accepting letters of interest to serve as a member. That would be until the beginning of March of 2023. Also, a reminder that our new website is mendonvt.gov. If you happen to still do mendonvt.org, it'll get you there. We have two openings on the Select Board this coming March of 2023. January 30th of 2023 is the deadline to submit petitions to the town office. And you can pick up the petition in the town office, and on the petition, it will tell you the required number of signatures. Also, our next meetings will be January 9th and January 23rd of 2023. Our January's meetings will be focusing on ARPA funds, getting some of those allocated. And our February meetings, we will be focusing on preparations for town meeting, which is March 6th of 2023. Okay, administrative matters. I'll make a motion to approve orders for $8,074.02 and a payroll for $10,620.61.
Second one.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. We will sign these. All right, we will skip down now to public comment. Again, we'll leave it open if someone comes a little bit late, anything from, okay. There is no one here for the purpose of public comment. And we're moving down to number six is business. And A on that is the speed limit in the Route 4 Village District. So yesterday evening, I forwarded a letter to Val, to Sarah Tully, and to Fred Bagley, addressed to Secretary of the Vermont Agency of Transportation, Joe Flynn. As I mentioned last meeting, we met with Joe Flynn, Secretary Flynn. He was last week up on Route 4 to talk about our scoping study, and he was nice to come down and spend some time with us. But he did highly recommend that the Select Board, if they're interested in reducing the speed limit in the Village Zoning District, to email a letter to him. Their committee meets, I believe, four times a year. There's a few members on it. Secretary Flynn is the chair of that meeting. So I drafted a letter to Secretary Flynn and sent it out for edits, comments, any corrections on it. So those are up to date. I know Fred Bagley might have some edits for it, so if he comes in, I'll skip back to this. Actually, I think he's coming in now, so I'm gonna hold up a minute and see what he has to offer. The Secretary Flynn understands we're doing a scoping study, but he highly encouraged that we, the Select Board send a letter requesting the lower speed limit separate from the scoping study. That way, it's on file permanently in the Vtrans folder for the town amendment. So Fred, we are actually at the letter to Secretary Joe Flynn. I've explained that, again, our meeting we had with him, and Secretary Flynn encouraging the Select Board to submit a letter to put on file. I'm not sure where it's gonna go. I think I mentioned they meet four times a year. Does that sound right? It's a small committee that he chairs.
Correct, three people.
Three people, okay.
I think it was, I think it was the head of Public Safety himself, and I forget, it was somebody else, a legislator. Big mouth, I think.
Sarah, Jennifer and Fred Bagley are here.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so I was getting ready to read the letter, and then you might have some edits from the English teacher.
It's from him more than me.
Ooh. All right, go ahead, I'm ready for him.
Uh, there were, the only things I thought just might be clarified, Larry, is we can go over later, it depends how public we have to be, that sometimes we use the term Village District, and sometimes we use the Village Zoning District in the text.
Two of them.
And I thought it just be clarified, it should be uniform, wherever it is, probably this Village District is the way.
Well, the Village Zoning District I took out of our scoping study. Stephanie has, that's the only way she described it. So usually, I pull from, I think you see that, saw that on the letter, the scoping study, the amendment on the move report, and our town plan, and whatever verbiage they had, that's, I pulled that.
So the town, so the town plan uses Village District, and MLM uses Village Zoning District. Okay.
Yeah, but, but you're right.
We're talking about the same stretch of road, so.
Yeah.
It might.
Where is that, that one village? Right here, at the bottom of that.
Couple places I could show you later.
I found one.
I would think using the town plan, because that's a municipal work, municipal document, not a community document, maybe just going to Village District is, is how the town refers to it, separate from how Stephanie referred to it.
Yeah, so I believe in the Mendon Town Plan, it's referred to as Village District. In our scoping study, it's Village Zoning District. So I don't know if that's a technical term that she uses, or...
Sarah, it, it escaped me that that the scoping study used the term Village Zoning District. That escaped my attention, but as we're talking about the same stretch of road, it just used more of it.
Or, I can just...
I don't think there's a distinction between the two of them. It's not to be confused with the Village Sector designation, which is just the intersection of Hill and Drive.
Right.
So whether you call it the Village District or the Village Zoning District, it's meant to encompass the Village Zoning District, which is going from Town Line Road up to, just beyond Meadow Lake Drive, before it goes into the
Yeah.
Conservation District, and then up to the Conservation District.
One of the plans talks, the area of concern is from Town Line Road to Medway Road.
I think that makes sense because it's definable. It's another road, and we're talking to road guys here, so I think that would make this more sense.
All right, so I can just change everything to Village District.
The only other suggestions I have, Larry, and there's a couple little commas and possessives and stuff that
That's the part I was...
Can you sort of, um, I wondered in the next, in the final paragraph, I think it is, we talked about the commercial and the Village District, there's a third line there, to reduce the speed limit in Route 40 in the commercial and the Village District. And while that did come out, the Mendon on the Move thing, after, I wonder if for the purpose of this letter, and knowing that we're never gonna get a reduce of the commercial district, if we should just emphasize on, it's the Village District.
Yeah, I actually went over that myself, but I'm pulling it out of the Mendon, Mendon on the Move report. And that, that mentions both.
Yeah, but we're never gonna get that.
No, you're absolutely right. The commercial section of Route 4, that's a tall order to slow down.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna get that, but it's the, it's the one that down here, we're, we're, yeah. I, I don't know whether, I, I don't know whether adding the fact that Mendon is the only town on the entire Route 4 across the entire state of Vermont that has a minimum 45, everybody else can lower it, will have. I don't know if that's worth following, if that's sort of, why are you picking on us, sort of, is useful, maybe not. And then, but those, so those are the only things I have.
Notice in Bridgewater, Bridgewater, you know, one used to go down to 25, and that's back up to 30.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow, but that's because they lost their school. They could lower it to 25, since it's a school district, correct?
Yeah, maybe.
But then they lost their school, I think, maybe not.
All right. And then Secretary Flynn requested this, gets emailed to him, so I got it on Google Docs, write a note, and hit send.
Yeah, so I think this, those are our suggestions. Otherwise, it covers all the different points, I think.
You wanna sign this?
I didn't have any further to really...
All right, so without the changes, I'll just go through this. Date of December 19th, 2022. Secretary Joe Flynn, Vermont Agency of Transportation, through 19 North Main Street, Watery, Vermont. Dear Secretary Flynn, at the recent town amendment Select Board meeting on December 12th, 2022, the board voted unanimously to forward a request to the Vermont Agency of Transportation to lower the speed limit in the Village District from 45 to 40 mi, 45 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour. U.S. Route 4 through Mendon is a state highway. It is currently designed to get as many vehicles as quickly as possible through the town. While transportation circulation and efficiency are important to state highways, the current 45 mile per hour speed limit in the Village District leads to unsafe traffic conditions and limits the town's ability to accommodate alternative modes of transportation, create a sense of place for the community, and revitalize and redevelop the Village District. To qualify the Select Board's request, we submit the following. The Traffic Safety Section of the 2019 Mendon Town Plan states the following. According to the Vtrans Public Crash Data Report, from January 1st, 2016 to January 1st, 2019, Mendon experienced 37 crashes and five injuries on U.S. Route 4. According to data, two of the highest accident areas on U.S. Route 4 occurred at its intersection with Park Lane and occurred by Meadow Lake Drive in the Village District. In our recent Mendon on the Move report and action plan dated June 2021, produced by the Vermont Council on Rural Development, there is an action item to encourage the state to reduce speed limits on U.S. Route 4 in the commercial and the Village District. The report also stated a unanimous agreement among business owners and committee members that the speed limit from Town Line Road to Medway Road should be reduced from 45 miles per hour to 35 to 40 miles per hour. The speed limit in the Village District is a major issue, and traffic calming was recommended. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely, Lawrence Jacob, RSL, Mendon Select Board Chair. So that's sent. Yeah, we already approved doing this. Okay. Deputy Sheriff Gregory Riggs is here, Sarah. All right, we're down to zoning administrator. I recently got in contact with Mendon Planning Commission Chair Terry Crisones to discuss the zoning administrator position. We have a couple applicants that are willing to do it at an interim basis. Asked Terry how she wanted to handle this. Normal procedure is the Mendon Planning Commission does the interview process and makes, and forwards a recommendation to the Select Board for approval. So she decided to keep with that format. She's working on how she's going to do it. The next meeting, I believe, of the Mendon Planning Commission, along with Mendon Select Board, is January 9th, 2023. There's a possibility that both boards may meet that evening. And first on the agenda for the Mendon Planning Commission to be the zoning administrator, we can have the hiring on our agenda later on our agenda, and then if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, they can send that down to us, and we can move forward. So it's in Terry's hands to see how she's gonna do that. I don't think there is really any issue on her part, or that she was gonna have a special meeting. So I, I think she's shooting for that second week in January, so it's in her hands. Depending on the recommendation that comes out of the Mendon Planning Commission, we will have to discuss, depending on the budget, our compensation for that position. So we'll have that ready to go January 9th. Any more comments on that, or? No, yes, no, you're good. Yep, okay. I think she finally got ahold of you. She, yeah, she hadn't seen the email, so. Okay. So now we're down to the 2023, 2024 budget. And I've gotta get Val up to speed on this. So at our last meeting, Val, Sarah, help me, we had an increase of 40-some-odd thousand, which came to a 3.7% increase in the municipal budget over our current budget. Again, this is the 2023, 2024 budget. Our consensus was that was, that 3.7 was too high to present to our voters on March 6th. So we've been working on ways to use some of our ARPA money to lower that and get it down to under 3%, maybe 2.9, or if it's possible, even lower. So Val, to start with, on the infrastructure budget, state aid to highway, Sarah has recommended we increase that by $3,000, which will be revenue. All right, so that...
That was one of our, I just wanted to state that, that was one of our suggestions, too, is to look at that at the last meeting. So we've done that, we've taken a look at that, and
Okay.
We don't, now make any more expectations if that come up just a little bit.
All right, thank the two of you for that one. So now we're, we've reduced the budget by 3,000. And then we looked at legal aid, which Nancy had recommended. We increased by, increased by 2,000, but should attorney's fees or legal fees go up, we could use money out of contingency, so we, at this point, this is all drag, took the 2,000 out. So now we're at 5,000, we reduced the budget. The next one is the Highway Maintenance Fund. Garage Maintenance Fund. I'll take my glasses off and find this one. I can read these in the morning, but in the evening... So when we get to it, we, at this point, have decided to reduce that expense by $2,000 and allocate ARPA money, money to do that. The project that would go into that is Bill was requesting to put a cover over the diesel fuel tank. Right now, it's just out in the open, and that money can go to that. So let me just find that one. So Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, that's out of the Garage Maintenance Reserve Fund?
Correct.
Okay, so currently, we have...
You gave 10,000 dollars into that annually, so that would be reduced to 8,000.
To 8,000, so that gives us the 2,000. So we'll allocate, when we do ARPA in January, we'll allocate $2,000 to, just to garage maintenance. It won't go to the reserve fund, because we can't do that. It would be specific for that project. Three, four, five, seven. And then the last one. Do this one, let me see. I think when we got done with one more item, we got down to 2, 2.9%. You know what the increased percentage on the library area go?
I just emailed both of you, you probably didn't have a chance to read it. The city agreed with 5%, and it shows you what that, all the other, the increase, that's 1,000 something, I don't trust. The city, the capacity announced, the little discussion, no objections.
Did you pack your room?
We did.
Good. 26,432, so now, hang on a minute.
So what was the number for Mendon?
So for Mendon, for the, well, call it the 24 budget, for our budget, it's, it's the 23, 24 budget.
So that is...
We're at 25, 6, 7, 7.
They give you the number, the amount of the increase, which is 1,000 something, rather, you see.
1259, I think. Is that the difference?
Yep. So it's an increase of $1,259. So that changes, it means, we have some more homework here to do.
I didn't know whether Randall had communicated that with you, and I sent you an email with that information, but you can keep that.
Sarah, did Randall communicate with you at some point?
He did early on the budget season, and, um, and that's where we had put in, I think, a 3% increase at that time. So that was a $500 overall increase, and this is 1258. So we added another 775 over the budget from where we stood in the beginning of the meeting.
They had, Randall and the board president had an extensive discussion with the committee, the Recreation Committee for the City, that I believe was chaired by Tom Bepoy, who was initially not very receptive, but I think they were, if they could listen, if they did not get the 5%, they would have to reduce ours, because they just can't. And, and Randall's point was that 5% is under the 8% inflation rate, so
Yeah.
I think that was the best you could do, and, you know, they, as I said in my email, they have been for all of this whole pandemic, trying to provide services safely.
Yeah, there's, there's consequences to any of this.
He said he was gonna be communicating, but I saw it, I bring this just in case he would get it.
We, we haven't heard yet, so.
That's the official, that's the budget, you see, and that's all of us at the, you know, city meeting, you know, right?
So I was trying to follow it. In the Rowland Herald, you know, they mentioned the budget passed, but I couldn't, there was no percentage mentioned for the library, so that, this is, this is what we're looking at. And Sarah and I discussed it earlier, because she'd had the rant of conversation with Randall Smatters, and he threw that earlier number, but this, this is a correction, so.
I'm sure if you have any specific questions, key or any ones, we'd be glad to come up and talk to you about the specifics of that. They would know better than us.
All right, so we've gotta find some other areas to get it down. We back up probably over 3%. Sarah?
We're at 2.3%.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, 2.8%.
Ooh, all right. So the danger of doing anything to our reserve funds is that it's, I'm using ARPA money. Is that it's a one-year thing, it's temporary, but when we get to our ARPA discussion in January, ARPA funds need to be allocated by the Select Board by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. So we do have the option of saving a chunk of ARPA money for that year way off in the future. All right, so this, we've got some work to do here. Sarah, do you want me to work with you on this, or this is kinda... I mean, you have to go over this with a real magnifying glass to find out how we're gonna get it down under 3% if we're back up to 3.8. All right, so we had 26, 677, 25... Twenty-five, six seventy-seven. We're at twenty-six, four thirty-two for the library. Increase of twelve fifty-nine. All right, so it gets back to trying to do something else with ARPA money. Or you got, you got one I was going to share with you. All right, I don't see anything on here, Sarah.
All of my ideas I discussed with you this afternoon.
Yeah.
What about the recreation programs? In the Barstool Youth Club? Nothing there?
So recrea- Those are, those are being on the recreation program line, I don't know, maybe. I don't, I'm not sure that we can shave anything off there, but you decide not to fund the Barstool Youth Club.
So yeah, it's level funded from our current budget. And that figure comes from them? From Barstool Youth? It's at, uh, three- Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, $3,000 is what both chipped in and then funded the Barstool Youth Club that, and then there's just $500 for other remaining programs to be aligned by our region or- So majority of that does go to the Barstool Youth Club?
So what about? So our high, we're back to reserve on highway improvement. The budget we're working on, we are adding one hundred and ten thousand dollars to that. All right, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is there any way of using ARPA, Sarah, for, I mean, we don't like touching these funds, but of reducing the highway equipment reserve fund and then whatever that amount is, designating ARPA fund to replace it?
Yeah, I already touched on highway equipment fund, but the highway improvement fund-
I mean-
If you pave your road, yep, if you pave a road with ARPA fund, it took it out of the timeline of the reserve funds. You potentially could go a couple years in reducing the amount going into the reserve fund, but we discussed this this afternoon, and my concern is that with inflation, it's asking us more and more to pave our roads, and we don't know what that trend is going to look like in the next few years, on whether that's going to leave that underfunded.
I meant to say highway improvement fund, reserve fund.
Right, yeah.
So if we allocated ARPA money for the budget we're working on, 23-24, and also set aside ARPA money for the 24-25 budget, that gets us by for a couple of years.
Yeah. Potentially.
Potentially. All right, so, do you want to do a quick math on that one? So we don't really have to, we're only looking in the neighborhood of maybe a $5,000 to get that down to 2.9%? Or lower? It's a little hard doing the math now until we know.
Right.
All right, so why don't we-
It's between five and six, it would be between five and six thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, so for discussion's sake, now we, why don't we reduce, this is a suggestion, though, reduce the highway improvement reserve fund by $6,000, which puts it down to 104,000, and allocate $6,000 of ARPA fund for paving? Will that work? For now?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll recalculate all that, see what we get down to. And do you need an answer right now, tonight? Final calculation? Or wait till January? Get, wait, bad, but.
Yeah, you have the, the first meeting in January to finalize numbers.
Okay.
We'll also know by then what the, what the Ruffin County tax, that most of them should be coming up this week.
Okay. Yeah, that's always-
Well, yeah, our equalized revenues will come out this week, and then we'll know what our Ruffin County tax will be.
All right, so you've got all your notes, and I think we're good on, we'll do the recalculation to see this final figure will get us down to that two-point something. And if it goes above three, then you can do the budget presentation. All right. I think we're in good shape on that. I'll work with you, Sarah, and then, you know, anything we talk about, we'll get to Val, so we'll be ready to move on that one. All right, we're still under business. Town meeting, which is March 6th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Just as a note, the office is closed that day for election preparation. And we don't have to decide tonight, but it's good for discussion as where we are going to hold our town meeting for 2023 in March. The two options are the town highway garage. And last year, there was an offer from Vista Senior Living. They have a whole section up there they're not using, which is separate from the senior living. We could check again to see if that's available. We have the contact information. Or stick with the highway garage. I know that's a little hassle for Bill, but any thoughts on that one, or anyone? Fred?
We heard from Secretary Flynn the other day that there's a conference room in the bottom of their, you know, T building, down at the bottom of the hill, that holds about 50 people. I've never been in there other than, I mean, first of our office, but it's room for 50 enough.
Throw that to Sarah. I have been in that room for a conference. It is a pretty good-sized room.
It must be the entire footprint of the building.
Think.
I don't know if it's handicapped accessible.
Um, it is, it has, what we have, the past has been declined to be able to use the room.
On the basis of-
I don't remember what the basis was. The answer was no.
Hmm, okay.
Are you glad Dr. Lawrence asked again? Or?
All right, why don't you, if you would, just go down and do a site visit, and then to so many town meetings, you'll kind of get a feel with it. Everyone's picking up, and yeah or nay, and-
We're sticking to sound.
Yeah, okay. Let us know. And then, Sarah, we have to have this decision by our next select board meeting January night, 2023, correct? Okay.
If the space at Vista is the space that we already were using in the past, you go to their right-hand entrance, and you go down the stairs, and there's a big conference room. Is that the one?
So as you're approaching Vista Senior Living, you're going to go into the left, where you used to go in anyways. They don't use that at all. It's, it's a they're not there yet as far as developing that. And I think there used to be, Sarah, a sunken area there, and now it's been built-
Yeah, it used to be where the restaurant was.
Yeah, the guy-
Yeah.
Um, it was not, you know, the conference room downstairs is no longer um, what they're suggesting. It, it was the upstairs, um, you know, main floor where they have a restaurant. It was sunken, but I, I believe some of the renovations has brought that floor up to one floor.
So a year ago, from the executive director of Lewis Marin, he did give us permission, and it was okay to, to use it. I'm not sure how it's heated, but he said it probably wouldn't be an issue because of COVID at the time. In fact, it was a senior living area, even though it's a separate section. And, I don't know, we made the decision to use our highway garage. So we don't have to make a decision tonight, but Sarah, do you want me to take a leak? Just call them to see if it's still available?
Yeah, you have the contact information.
I have, yeah, I have it right here, so.
Yeah.
I'll find that out. Fred's going to check on V-Trans and email me soon as you find out, yeah or nay. And whether you think it's big enough, or they'll know what it holds. Okay. And then we'll have that information before January night.
One, one thing we have no idea is whether COVID is still going to be an issue for us in March or not. Now, it's not quite about Vista.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to read the tea leaves right now. I mean, we're in a tridemic, so it's, what's going to be in just over two months?
Yeah.
Well, a part of the concern there was we can't change the venue once the warning has been signed. We cannot change the venue before a meeting last minute, like a regular meeting. Town meeting has to be worn 30 days in advancing. You can't change the warning. So if there's a reason for us not to be able to use an outside facility, we have to re-warn town meeting. Jesus.
I think there was, you know, just a few pieces last year that had to be put together, like insurance and things, different things like that, so, which falls back on, on that, so. All right, I'll have a discussion and email any results. If not, we, we'll give Bill the bad news. If we do go to the town garage or, or another facility, we have to look into our microphone. Supposedly, we have one here upstairs, but I've never seen it. We used Green Mountain Pub rescues last year from Phil Douglas. And I know we had a lighting issue over there, but that's not hurt, so we'll look into that, so let me make a note. PA system. All right, now we're down to articles for warning for town meeting, which are due in the town office January 19th, 2023 is the deadline for petitioned articles. So this is on our agenda. Sarah, do you have any more information of what we might be seeing for petitioned articles?
So I, I don't, but it's, you know, the appropriation, any appropriation request that is new or increased over last year's funding will need to submit their petitions. There, we have talked in the past of, if, if the community center is going to be on the ballot in some sort of action to gauge, are we going to create a reserve fund? You know, all of those types of things need to be decided, defined, figured out, what the articles are for town meeting. And if there's any-
Right, so the individual's working on anything that might need a, what they want as an article. You know, it just falls on them to get that information to us, either going to the select board or getting, getting petition signed. So go back to, anything else for public comment? Okay. So there's nothing else on our agenda. And I can see, Sarah, anything else you think we forgot? Anything up for discussion? This is a record.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays to everyone, so. Again, it's just over 20-some-odd days before we meet again on January 9th. And possibly we'll have the planning commission upstairs. If they do want to do the same night, it's up to them. Usually they meet the first Monday of the month, but that's the day after New Year, so that's not going to happen, so. I know it's, it's moved to the next following week, so. All right, going once, going twice, see nothing else. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 5:50. All those in favor, signify by sending aye. Aye, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.